All right, well, good morning, everybody. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
Present.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we come to you today first saying thank you. We thank you that you have given us another opportunity of life, health, and strength. We ask for your guidance as we do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. We thank you for your protection. We thank you for your provision, and we thank you for wisdom and knowledge. We thank you for what you've done in our city, for what you're doing, and the things that you're going to do. We ask your continued blessings upon our mayor, our city council, and all who make up our city. We thank you for your faith to call those things that be not as though they were. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on July 9th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of July 5th through the 11th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Agenda item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. We have a real special group here with us this morning, and Mayor Ford's going to lead that. I just want to introduce the Gadsden Waterworks and Sewer Board General Manager Chad Hare is with us today, along with numerous Gadsden Waterworks and Sewer Board employees. I think everybody's well aware of the water main break that occurred a week or so ago. To say it was a catastrophic break that could have had catastrophic consequences is an understatement. But due to the leadership of this team that's here today, and the hard work and dedication, and coming together and working as a unit, as a family, like they always do, they literally saved the day. And so, without further ado, there'll be more information coming on that, but I want Mayor Ford has something to say, and then we're going to invite you guys to come up one by one and receive something from the city.
So, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to turn to the Water Board. But I just, I want to tell y'all how much I appreciate y'all. And it happened about 4:00 a.m. in the morning. I'm sure y'all were out before that, but I got up and I did what I do at 4:00 a.m., and I flushed the toilet, and nothing was coming. And then, all of a sudden, 10 minutes later, I get a call that we have no water. And I said, "Well, that makes sense." And so, then, all of a sudden, the calls start ringing in, and Chad, I talked to Chad Hare, and basically, y'all were already hitting the ground at ground zero. And I just want to say how much I appreciate y'all. You don't realize how important water is until you don't have water. And that day, I think, I'm not sure what day that was, is a Monday, I think, Chad, was it? So, we wanted to make sure we activated down in Colley Homes and handed out water, and we were able to get in the community in District 3, and make sure they knew that we were there and present. And y'all were already down there working on the other side of the hill. And when I went over there, I wanted to act like I wanted to get in there and help until I started sweating. And y'all were down there about to die, and I saw Gatorade and water flying everywhere. I thought, "I think I'm in the way." But I just wanted to tell y'all seriously how much we appreciate you. And then, the next day, I hope the lunch was good. I'm sorry I couldn't eat with you. But the main thing is, is that you are appreciated, and it didn't go unnoticed. And it's not for us, but it's for all those people. And the funny thing is, is when Chad was telling me, he said, "You know, this affects Horton being. This affects other areas that buy our water." And so, for y'all to do what you did, I don't think you, I don't know if you really realize what a big deal it was. It was a big deal. The big deal was for the medical, the hospitals. The fire department went over there and took pumper trucks and had to rotate water from Tillison Bend, Glencoe, Ball Play, to be able, so the people staying in the hospital could have air conditioner. Tony Catton's there, a eye surgeon called me. He said, "Cree, we can't do eye surgery on these cataracts. We don't have any water at the Surgery Center." I mean, you know, you don't think about stuff like that. And then, 30 minutes later, he said, "Hey, we got enough water to perform our surgeries." So, I don't know what in the world y'all did. I just know you worked your butts off, and I want to tell you how much we appreciate it, and you don't go unnoticed, and we just want to call you up here one at a time. So, Chad and Mr. President, if you want to come down here and help us.
All right.
So, if you know, I'm in the military. If you ever heard, and I got made fun of growing up, I can't say my Rs, but I call it a challenge corn. They always say, "Are you eating corn?" But I'm in the military, and I believe in these challenge corns, and you only get one if you do an exceptional job. And that's what we have in the City of Gadsden, in our office, in the President, and Chad. You want to say anything, Chad?
Sure.
Yeah.
First off, thank you to the mayor and to the council for the invitation, and just every bit of the support that you gave us. I don't know in my time, as the general manager, or maybe as the city engineer, that I've felt as much support as we had those two days last week. Challenging, to say the least, but let me run over this just real quick, just give you a little bit of brief history about, a little bit about what happened. Around 2:30 in the morning, we can tell from our status system from the water plant, is when what I would call we experienced a catastrophic main failure. What we found to be a 20-inch cast iron main that directly feeds a tank, a 5-million-gallon ground storage tank off of Naklulah Road that is the primary pressure source for the City of Gadsden, and it also supplies the vast majority of our other water tanks in the system. It took under an hour, just as a, to give you an idea, it took under an hour, about 3:25 in the morning, according to the computer, that the main break drained our North Gadsden tank, which is about a million-gallon ground storage tank. By 5:40 in the morning, and this is before the guys had a chance to even come on site, that 5-million-gallon tank was empty. That left a 3-million-gallon tank, if you're traveling up the mountain that you can see from the road, that left it there, basically, to control what we had left in the system. Mr. Joel Smith, affectionately known as Peewee, has been retired with the board for six years. He was the first call that Billy Roberts made, and absolutely answered the phone, got up, and started helping immediately. Just to kind of give you just a real brief story about the family that we have at Gadsden Water, and I know at the City of Gadsden. But Billy and Joel found the leak probably between 6:00 and 7:00 a.m. as the sun was coming up, and can see a little bit more about what was going on. And that's when these guys in the back, that I get the honor to work with every day, they know this, I've called them my heroes before, but these are heroes of the community and a personal heroes of mine, that's when they stepped in and they showed out. So, they came in in efforts immediately to isolate the valve, I mean, isolate the leak. And so, it just takes, for lack of a better way of saying, it just a couple of valves on each side of the leak, and we try to get as close to the leak as we can to valve that off so that it keeps pressuring the rest of the system. And that's why we started to see an impact pretty much immediately to where we stopped. I say immediately, we started maintaining the leak to where we were able to get some pressure back into the system, but it took until about 1:00 in the afternoon before that leak was completely isolated. And guys, when I say that we were close, I mean, it was a bad situation, and I, listen, I apologize to the customers that we have, and, you know, I'd love to say something like that's never going to happen again. But when I say that we were close to it being a catastrophic event, we were probably about 45 minutes away from that 3-million-gallon tank emptying. And so, it took these guys stepping up and getting on it. And so, after the leak was isolated, we made the decision, after the system started to stabilize, that we sent these guys home for the evening, because they were going to have another big day the next day, and they were in some brutal heat and brutal conditions. So, they went home for the evening, and we started gathering up the materials that were needed. I'd like to thank Athens Utilities for kind of giving us some backup materials. Those were just, you know, those just-in-case type of things, in case something else went wrong. And also, Anniston Waterworks and Sewer Board that provided an inline valve that is just good to have, wasn't required, but it was good to have, and they had one in stock. So, those repairs the next day, bottom line, our guys did an exceptional job. We were backfilling the trench. They got there about 6:00 in the morning, and we were backfilling the trench by about 1:00 in the afternoon. The parts that I'm leaving out can probably only be told by pictures. We had about a 45-minute presentation last night at the board. I will not go into a 45-minute for the sake of time, but just know that these guys, you know, not being hyperbolic, are true heroes to the community, and I get the honor to recognize them. So, Mayor, you want me to go ahead and start?
Councilman Robinson, you're on the Water Board. Can you come down here?
And also, Mr. Gil Isbell, if, as a board member, if you don't mind coming forward.
What in the world are you dealing with? I was there on top.
So, gentlemen, if you don't mind just coming through here as I call out your name. Billy Roberts. Joel Smith.
Second. If y'all want to come ahead over here, we'll do a big picture with everybody.
Marcus Baker.
Brandon Booker.
David Bowen. Ben Brown. Jeffrey Corbin. Dwayne Fox. Tommy Goggins. Brett Jackson. Jeff Colley. Matt Ledbetter. Jason McKivin. Donnie Minton.
Y'all can go up here and jump up on this back row, too. Y'all can fill in back behind there.
Logan Saylor. David Watson. Jared Waferd. Brady Williams. These are the guys that were in the trench. These are the guys that were out in the field, but we got so many more to thank back at the office. Don't have enough room, I think, in the building to do that, but just believe me when I say it was a total team effort. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for the time.
We'll get a picture.
to thank you, City of Gadsden and all its customers. I want to thank you for all the work you did. I mean that from the bottom of our heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Thank you, guys, for showing up. Thank you, Chad. Thank you for being here. Give them time to go back to work and... All right, what a, what a big moment. Thank you, Mayor Ford. We'll move to along in our agenda. Next on our agenda is Section 8. It's unfinished business. 8A is a resolution appointing members to the Tarrantine Avenue Architectural Review Board. This resolution was tabled until today's meeting on July 9th. It appoints Tracy Miller and Kelly Carr for terms expiring on May 20th, 2027. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt, and, well, I'll wait till comments.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I just want to clarify for my neighbors there. So, we are adding Ms. Miller and Ms. Carr to replace Judge Sledge and Adam Solley. And then, we also have an ordinance that will be coming up to expand that board by two additional seats, and that will be followed by a resolution adding Judge Sledge back to that board. Adam Solley has said that he would be fine with allowing his term to expire, but that'll leave us one open seat once we add Judge Sledge back. But that's the procedure here.
All right. Any other comments? All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 9, under unfinished business, is a resolution authorizing Community Development Block Grant Program Housing Rehabilitation Services Agreement with Habitat for Humanity. This is to complete substantial housing rehabilitation services according to HUD program guidelines. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Further, under Item 8, unfinished business, on June 25th, there was a public hearing conducted, excuse me, there was a public hearing conducted and a resolution was tabled indefinitely. The resolution was Southern Fair Ventures LLC, doing business as Picnic, has applied for a restaurant and retail liquor license at One River Road, Gadsden, Alabama, and has met all requirements of the Code of Ordinances for the issuance of such license. So, after further review, they, Legal Department, Building Department, Revenue Department have said they have met those obligations and requirements, and so, at this point, I would like to make a motion to lift that resolution off the table. And it requires a second and then a vote.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to remove the resolution from the table, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay. We have two abstentions. Motion carries to remove the item from the table.
All right. And I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Item 10 comes under the first reading. This is an ordinance amending City Code Section 58-8, subsection B, subsection 1. This is to change the number of members composing the Tarrantine Avenue Architectural Review Board from five to seven. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 11 is new business. I think we have a couple today.
Yes, Mr. President. First one comes from the Legal Department for, on behalf of the EMA. This is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Perimeter Inc. to provide a mapping service for the City of Gadsden, including first responders. It'll notify residents of road closures and reroutings due to emergencies, also due to local events or public events such as concerts or track-and-field events, or marathons, half marathons, 5Ks, all that good stuff. So, anyway, this is $22,750. This is a budgeted item. We did receive an $11,375 grant to offset the cost of this software service. So, with that in mind, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules today and consider this under new business.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. That's all for new business. We have, and Item 12 is Department Reports, Committees, and Boards. I know we have one coming from the Public Affairs Department, Michael Rogers.
Had to make sure to turn my microphone on, since I remind you all about that all the time. I'm Michael Rogers with the Public Affairs Department, and several weeks ago, y'all approved a contract with REPT, which is the video answer platform, and that is going to be launching today. It should have gone live earlier today. We're going to be sending out a press release this afternoon, hitting social media later. And just to remind you all of what that is, that's a way for citizens to submit a question to the city, kind of something that they've been wondering about, whether it's an update about a project or something like that, and it allows us to provide them with a short answer. One or two minutes is kind of the goal. The mayor has already recorded at least one for us, but we can have him answer, we can have department heads answer. And the way people will get to this, we're, since we're rolling it out, we got a couple of different places. On our website, there's a section across the top header that says, "How do I?", and the very first option there is "Ask a Question." We also have the Newsflash section, which is pretty prominent in the middle. We'll be taking the press release and putting the link there for people to find it. And then, down at the very bottom of the page, there's a link of all of our social media, and we've got a link to what we're calling it Ask Gadsden down there. So, three places on the homepage. We'll be sharing the link on social media in various places, and so, like Mayor, for example, Mayor Ford's question was, you know, "What's the update on the West Meagan Sports Complex?" If you watch council meetings, you kind of have an idea, but if you don't, then he gave a rundown of where that stands with the architect and stuff like that. For people to submit it, you know, once you go to the website, you just ask your question, and you'll submit your email. Once we approve the question and get an answer, then that'll be published, and you can see the other questions that other people have asked. So, kind of like a frequently asked questions section in FAQ, if you have a question about something, then you can log in, and, well, you don't even have to log in, you can just go to that site and see if that question has been asked before, because maybe you don't have to go through the trouble of asking it yourself. So, this is a three-month trial that we're trying out, so we're, you know, making a push to get folks involved with it to see, see how it works. We are, I know in pre-council, Derek was talking about the map-making part being one of the first cities in Alabama to do this. We are launching alongside Leeds. Leeds is also doing this, but we are the first city in Alabama, along with them, to use this platform. So, we're kind of giving it a test run, seeing how it goes.
That's great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
So, Mr. President, I want to thank Michael and Brett. Brett found this, it's somewhere he attended, and they're from California, Brett, and they're just now, it's pretty prevalent out on the West Coast, but Alabama's getting on the League of Municipalities, they're presenting at the next meeting, and also, we're one of the first cities in the state, other than Leeds, to do this. So, I think it's just transparency, and I think it's good to be able to inform, and remember, if you're called upon to answer a question, I had a hard time with this, you have to be quick. It's only like a 30 or 60-second answer. It's in like a meeting or something, so I had to redo my answer a couple of times. They said I was filibustering, so, but it works, and the people love it, so it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's exciting. I like the transparency angle from it, and then I think it's just important to let people know what we're doing as opposed to have them guess what we're doing. So, I think we're being proactive as a government, and hopefully, people will opt in on the text.gov and the Hey Gadsden app, and now the REPT app, so there's just all kind of ways to communicate with City Hall and the administration to find out what is going on in your city. So, hopefully, people will do that. Look forward to seeing how it works.
So, we're going to be talking about it a lot here soon, so just keep your eyes out.
Is there something we can share, like on social media in our neighborhood area?
We'll have a post going out tonight.
Okay.
About it specifically, because part of what we're doing today is, you know, like I said, we had the final meeting yesterday with the company just to hit the final bullet points. I've got a couple of answers that folks have answered that, you know, I need to finish uploading. We do have some that are already live on the site right now, but that went live, I think it was at 9:30 or 10:00 this morning, so it's fresh. But yeah, we'll be, we'll have things on social media that you can share in neighborhood watch groups, mentioned at community meetings, or at church on Sunday, or wherever you want to.
That's great. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And I've also got someone else that's coming up to speak about another event. This is Jesse, so I'll let her introduce herself.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. Hey, guys, I'm Jessie Lindsay. I am also with the Public Affairs Department, and I'm here to talk to you this evening, or this morning, rather, about Community Safety Night, which is an event that's going to be put on by the city and kind of co-hosted with the Gadsden Police Department, the Gadsden Fire Department, and so forth, EMA, on August 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the venue. So, as it is a community safety event, we have already spoken with Councilman Wilson and gotten the blessing from the Public Safety Committee to host it. There will be dunking booths, we'll do the kid passports. It's really looking forward, you know, to making connections with the community for, you know, the police department, the fire department, EMA, all of those involved. Edwah County Sheriff's Office and the Alabama National Guard will also be present. It is important to note that transportation will be provided from the housing developments, and we are working to establish a route for that currently. As it is a free event, donations are always welcome, very welcome, and so, what I'd ask for you guys today is just to help us get the word out. We'll be creating an event to share on Facebook and such, but if you guys could help us shed the word, share the word in your districts, that would be so great moving forward. Does anybody have any questions for me thus far?
Will Councilman Wilson be on the dunking booth? That'll pretty much get the traffic area there a big time.
If he does, will you, sir?
No, no, I don't like, I'm not, no.
I can think of a couple of people in short distance from me that I'd like to dunk in both right now, but...
Well, I would challenge you to do that, sir. That would be, that would be top-notch.
One suggestion, no kidding, that I do have, that kind of piggybacks on Michael's previous presentation, I watched a really great interview with a panel about how to effectively communicate with your citizens and how to go meet them where they are, you know, and specifically, they talk about programs like See, Click, Fix, and things like that. And I, again, want to commend Brett and the mayor's staff on all the efforts you guys are taking to be really creative with going and meeting our citizens where they are. One great recommendation that came out of this video that I watched, that I think we could all learn from, is making sure that we have interpreters at these events, these community outreach events, because, again, as has been mentioned here before, we have a not insignificant population of English-as-a-second-language citizens. So, knowing the minorities that are represented in...
So we're going to be talking about it a lot here soon, so just keep your eyes out.
Is there something we can share, like on social media in our neighborhood area?
We'll have a post going out tonight.
Okay.
About it specifically. Because part of what we're doing today is, you know, like I said, we had the final meeting yesterday with the company just to hit the final bullet points. I've got a couple of answers that folks have answered that, you know, I need to finish uploading. We do have some that are already live on the site right now. But that went live, I think it was at 9:30 or 10:00 this morning. So it's fresh. But yeah, we'll have things on social media that you can share in neighborhood watch groups, mentioned at community meetings, or at church on Sunday, or wherever you want to.
That's great, thanks, Michael.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
And I've also got someone else that's coming up to speak about another event. This is Jesse. So I'll let her introduce herself.
Okay.
Thank you, Michael. Hey, guys, I'm Jesse Lindsay. I am also with the Public Affairs Department, and I'm here to talk to you this evening, or this morning, rather, about Community Safety Night, which is an event that's going to be put on by the city and kind of co-hosted with the Gaston Police Department, the Gaston Fire Department, and so forth, EMA, on August 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the venue. So as it is a community safety event, we have already spoken with Councilman Wilson and gotten the blessing from the Public Safety Committee to host it. There will be dunking booths, we'll do the kid passports. It's really looking forward, you know, to making connections with the community for, you know, the police department, the fire department, EMA, all of those involved. Edwah County Sheriff's Office and the Alabama National Guard will also be present. It is important to note that transportation will be provided from the housing developments, and we are working to establish a route for that currently. As it is a free event, donations are always welcome, very welcome. And so what I'd ask for you guys today is just to help us get the word out. We'll be creating an event to share on Facebook and such, but if you guys could help us shed the word, share the word in your districts, that would be so great moving forward. Does anybody have any questions for me thus far?
Will Councilman Wilson be on the dunking booth? That'll pretty much get the traffic area there a big time.
If he does, will you, sir?
No, no, I don't like, well, I'm not, no.
I can think of a couple of people in short distance from me that I'd like to be in the dunking booth right now, but.
Well, I would challenge you to do that, sir. That would be, that would be top-notch.
One suggestion, no kidding, that I do have, that kind of piggybacks on Michael's previous presentation. I watched a really great interview with a panel about how to effectively communicate with your citizens and how to go meet them where they are, you know? And specifically, they talk about programs like See, Click, Fix, and things like that. And I, again, want to commend Brett and the mayor's staff on all the efforts you guys are taking to be really creative with going and meeting our citizens where they are. One great recommendation that came out of this video that I watched, that I think we could all learn from, is making sure that we have interpreters at these events, these community outreach events. Because again, as has been mentioned here before, we have a not insignificant population of English-as-a-second-language citizens. So knowing the minorities that are represented in your community, and having some sort of translator available at some of these community outreach events can be really effective. So thank you, though, for what y'all are doing.
Thank you, Councilman.
And tell us the date, again, August 6?
That is August 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the venue.
All right. You got anybody else?
So, Mr. President, this has been a huge recruiting tool. The police officers have embraced this, and Jesse and Michael and Tina have just taken it and ran with it. And we thought it was going to be small, and it's turned into be something really big. So just to give the council an update, we have three, hopefully graduating the academy in August, police officers, and we have hopefully 10, based on these recruiting efforts, going to the academy. And when will that start? September?
August 26th.
August 26th. And is that right, Chief Jaggers? 10?
Nine.
Nine.
One's already certified.
One's already certified. So this has been a big deal, and it's really, it hadn't come from me or Chief Jaggers, it's come from the rank and file on down, and they've just embraced it. And so, I mean, we're excited about it. So our numbers are getting there. You know, Fire Department, I think we're one away from capping out, and I think we're almost, I think we've hired two. So I told them to go one over.
Do I have a waiting list?
Yeah. So we're going to have a waiting list in Fire Department.
Outstanding.
So we're going to get there in the Police Department, too.
Yeah. Well, appreciate the efforts. I think that's what it takes, is do what y'all are doing. And Councilman Wilson's comments were right on target of meeting people where they are.
Yes, sir.
I think that's crucial, and y'all are doing that, so thank you. Appreciate the leadership.
Thank you, looking forward to it.
All right, any other departments or reports? If not, we will move into Agenda Item 13, which is citizen request to speak. Robert Washington is here today in recognition of Courtney Washington, who will represent the United States at the obstacle course racing world championship. Mr. Washington here?
Well, darn. Mr. President, can I say something about her?
Sure, please do.
Courtney won the Barbarian Challenge, and she is from Southside, I believe, right, Chris? Okay. And wonderful girl. We work out in the afternoon. I don't work out with her, obviously, and she's on a whole other level. But she is a sweet young lady, and I think we all know her family. And she is looking for donations. She's going to Costa Rica to represent us in the national competition. So I personally donated, and she, I mean, anything helps her, you know, $25, $50, whatever. But she's been borrowing our Barbarian workout stuff up at the Falls. Christina let her borrow it. Her trainer is Condi, who's the Assistant Police Chief from City of Attala. So there's a lot of people involved in this supporting her, and she's just a, she's a joy to be around, so.
Well, that's wonderful. We'll, I guess we can contact Mr. Washington and see if he wants to come back next week or whatever. He has an open invitation. We'd love to hear about his daughter, about Courtney, and she's welcome to come as well when you see her, Mayor Ford.
Yeah, thank you.
Tell her, well, that's good to know, that she's representing our country and from right here in Gaston, so that's great. All right, there's no other requests there, so we'll move to Section 14, remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor Ford, you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to say, I know there's Back in Time's coming up, when, Michael?
October.
Oh, a long ways away. I thought it was August, so that's why I wanted to bring it up. But it's October, we'll just go ahead and talk, not Back in Time, Walk Through Time. Yeah, same thing. Back to the future. It could be Back in Time, it's in a cemetery. But we'll announce that in September, sorry about that, Michael. But I want to explain what we're going through right now. We are going through, today is day one, that we've been meeting with department heads about the budget process. I want to go through some things. There was an email chain going around, and I want to explain the reasons why we can't attend a meeting after hours and off-campus, I would say. We're having our first internal budget meetings with department heads. There's more than 25 departments within the city. It takes about an hour and a half per department. I'm not sure if the previous mayors have ever been in on the budget meetings, but I am. I'm on every one of them. Brandon's doing a wonderful job, along with Gina, and Brittany's assisting us, and we're meeting every day. This will take approximately three to four weeks for us to meet with all 25 departments, and then we'll have a budget that we present to the council. The mayor's responsibility is to draft a budget proposal. It's up to the council to vote yes or no. What we're doing is trying to put together a budget based on the numbers that we have forecasted. It's very tedious what Brandon has to do. Not only does he just take the previous year's budget, but he also has to take revenue projections. That's, of course, the mayor wants him to jack up the revenue projections, so he wants to jack them down, to be conservative. So we have to get with Laura in revenue, and she has to tell us, of all the five, six restaurants we got opening up in the next fiscal year, what the projections may be, we'll increase that. We also look at the increase in the revenue, the growth that y'all have all voted on, and we've all helped Gaston grow again, so what we're looking at in the revenue projections. And that goes into the budget then, of what we can, budget for each department, and then if pay raises are available, what we do there. There's also something with new overtime rules. That's why we, I'm not going to authorize employees or staff to be able to come to meetings after hours unless I deem it necessary. Overtime is time and a half, and it costs the city a lot of money. Right now, we are budgeting in a good manner. We're within our means, and we're about 4%, 5% below where we should be on payroll, so I'm proud to say that. We've tightened our belt and made sure we're where we need to be for the next fiscal year. I just feel it's a waste of taxpaying dollars to have to meet after hours when we don't even have the necessary information. I want to talk about the subcommittees. Your subcommittees on the council are very important to the mayor's office. I want you to know that. However, the Attorney General has ruled that committees are advisory-only. They have no, it's not an administrative body. Neither nor the chairman of the committee have any administrative or executive authority. That's coming straight from the Attorney General's opinion. So let me give you a good example. Councilwoman Monatris, Public Works, we have leaned on her quite heavily in Public Works when we needed an additional equipment. Saved me a lot of time of meeting with them, with Ty. You just don't meet with Public Works in 30 minutes. It probably takes two to three hours. And for her to come back and tell me, hey, it's up to you, but you got to find the money, but we need five loader trucks, four trash trucks, basically, you need to find $6 million if you want to do what you want to do. So then I go back and I try to find what we can find that we present to the council that's fiscally responsible, and then that's what we do. I don't want to be personal, because a lot of things going on in this country, but the people voted for change two years ago, and we're not going to do things the way they used to be done. There's certain people in City of Gaston, and I'm going to say this kindly, in certain areas, that still think they ought to conduct business the way they've been conducting business for the last 40 years. I'm not going to do that. If I disagree with you, I'm going to tell you I disagree with you. You tell me you disagree with me, and then we're going to go about our way, and we're going to be cordial. But if you don't play ball with me, I'm not going to play ball with you, just to be honest with you. I'm trying to run a business. This total budget of this city's $100 million. I take it very serious. When I ran for this position, I was on Budget Committee in Montgomery, had a $9 billion budget, and we put a lot of time into that budget for education, workforce development, four-year schools, two-year schools, and et cetera. And I'm doing the same with this budget. So I'm not going to go to a dog and pony show just to satisfy certain people when I know we don't have our information ready, and I want to present to the whole council as a whole and make sure I have my facts and figures straight. So I just want to say that very kindly, Mr. President, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
I don't have any remarks, but the mayor said he would be happy to take a question. I do have, I do want to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
With respect to, as it relates to our district meetings, so how will we handle that where that's probably the most appropriate place for department heads to address some issues? Is that something that?
Absolutely. So if you have a district meeting quarterly or something, yes, we could. So President Biden passed an administrative actions getting upheld in the Texas Supreme Court. But as far as in Alabama, we've had to abide by this executive amendment. If anybody makes below $25 and, what is it, 6 cents an hour, then you have to pay time and a half, whether they show up or not, whether they're management or not. So previously, if you were a manager and you had four people in the handbook, this is why we need to revise our handbook, four people under your direction as a supervisor, you didn't get overtime. So now, if you make $25 an hour, which is unfortunately a lot, 80% of probably the employees in City of Gaston, when they show up after hours, we have to pay time and a half. So we've had to, we're kind of in a limbo here, waiting on what's happening. Lee's been advising us. And I think in October, Lee, it goes up to $28. So we're just like unfuzzled. So we think possibly, the Supreme Court may throw that out, but we got to live by the law that the President of the United States signs, and especially executive amendments. So if you have a quarterly meeting, sure. If you have a bi-weekly meeting, no. You know, we just can't do it. But if you'll tell me and get with our office and say, hey, we have quarterly meetings, and we're about to do our meetings also after this next budget in conjunction with the council members, because we can't do anything without y'all, and I hope y'all feel the same about us, and we're all working together. So, yes, ma'am, we will.
Thank you.
That off?
That's, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give another shout-out to the Water Department for the great job of handling what actually was a crisis, and the city and the Water Department working together. It's good to see all of them come here today and be recognized, so we just appreciate the quick response to what was going on a few days ago. Also, just want to recognize the Blueprint for being here. They're, Ciandra's a member of our church, of course, and they're located across from the Fire Department downtown, and you get used to hearing that name. They're doing great things here in the City of Gaston, so glad to have representatives from the Blueprint here today. We know that good news travels slow, bad news travels fast. So all those constituents in District 2, that camper has finally moved. I don't know what UFO dropped it off and who picked it up, but I'm so glad to see it no longer in North Gaston there along Highway 411. So just want to thank everybody, every department head for all that you do, Mayor Ford, the council. We just appreciate all that's going on in the City of Gaston. Let's keep moving forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to address some things here. Over the, I think, past two weekends, there have been some vehicles towed, calls have been made, and so to the council persons, and listen, if you get a letter in the mail stating a concern about your property, you don't have to wait to the date to come to council meeting to address that. There's a number that is on there to the Building Department, if I'm not mistaken, with the person's name on it, who you addressed that problem with. Please call the Building Department. As the city council, I am not aware of the full details of what they're addressing your property about, but I'm sure if you call that number on there, they will be more than happy to assist and help you, okay? Calling us, it's kind of, we then have to go do the homework that probably is addressed on that letter to you, or that you can call the Building Department and get direct attention for. So I know that there had been a big spill on Facebook and some addressing here at, I mean, at City Hall about some things. And listen, some mistakes can be made and probably have been made. No one here and outside of this facility is perfect, okay? So at least work with the Building Department, they do a great job. Thank all of those that are doing such a great job there in the Building Department, their transparency and their willingness to work with people, okay? Want to do, again, the Water Department, each member that's out on, in the community, those that are in an office for all their hard-working efforts that they do. Thank Chad, Mr. Harris, sorry, for coming and being a part of this day of appreciation. So I do also want to address some comments here as it relates to transparency. There's been a lot of things I've been hearing at this council meeting that is very good, but when things are being said, I think there's also that actions come behind those words. Transparency, there's been emails sent out as it relates to today. There's a Finance Committee meeting downtown Civic Center at 5:30. I am unaware, or we're unaware, of the overtime rule and the addressing of those emails that I've sent as it relates to those to come to the meeting from the city employment side, meaning Director of Finance and Revenue, people of that, CDBG and HUD Administrator. I do agree with the overtime rule. I do agree with managing and budgeting our money, as the statements that the mayor has made. But again, transparency is key. And so if I knew that, I would have been more than happy to change the meeting time and location to do so. And I only speak of this here because, again, transparency is key, and it has been addressed. And I just want to be fully transparent. Subcommittees, as it relates to the statement, I am very in agreeance with subcommittees and things of that nature. And I am so in agreeance with the people voted for change, and that there are members of our community that wants to see things done in a certain way, a way that they have been done for years, and that works on both sides. I think that is the case. And I think we sometimes still see business done as usual in certain areas and in certain ways. But to disagree and find a way of disagreeing, to be able to work together is very important. And I try to do my best to take advice from those that sit here on this DS with me, but you got to be able to talk. You got to also be able to have those conversations, those heated conversations, no matter how big someone won, or how small someone won, we won. We won the respect and the vote of our people to be trusted, to do our job. And no matter how much I agree with any one of these ladies and gentlemen up here, I will still do whatever I can to work with each and every single last one of them, no matter how we agree or how we don't agree. And so I just wanted to make that statement known, hopefully that won't go on deaf ears, and that we will continue to move forward, and some things be addressed that is necessary. We will conduct our Finance Committee meeting today, with taking those statements in consideration as it relates to overtime and what's going on, the nature of what's going on in our United States of America. I want to, I want to close by saying this. I think we need a moment of reflection, of the tone and tenor of our politics. It is our right to criticize policies and even our character, even the character of policy effectiveness. We live in an era where exklatory rhetoric says the most damning and insightful things, and that oftentimes are what's rewarded. Those are oftentimes what's rewarded. I think we need to calm down and check ourselves, and just check, again, the tone and tenor of what's going on. As we all know, that a former president was shot at. And when one disagrees and does not agree with those things that are said and done, that does not give anyone the space and the opportunity to do what was attempted to do. And even in our local politics, no matter how, again, frivolous we become with each other, that we just stay focused on the common goal. And today, I want to make it publicly known that I am in tune and I am on board with the common goal, and that's the better good of all of Gaston. However, I am elected in District 3, and so I do have a deeply connection and rooted connection in District 3. And so therefore, I seek those needs in District 3 while also being respectful for each and every one of my colleagues' districts up here as a whole. And so, again, I hope that, again, this falls on, do not fall on deaf ears, and that it's taken hold hardly from a genuine space at this time, Mr. President. I review my comments.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Avery.
I want to, I appreciate his comments, and I, I'll take full responsibility. I just assumed since you were Finance Chairman, Counselor, you knew of the new rules, so we'll make sure we have beressed you of all changes and rules and regulations that come down the pot. I just, I shouldn't assume that.
All right. Thank you very much for that, Mayor Ford. Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have any comments, Mr. President.
All right. Councilwoman Monatra?
I just wanted to continue to sing the praises of the Senior Wellness Center that opened over a month ago at twenty-eight, twenty-nine West Megan Boulevard. I spoke to the director, Malia West, just last week, and she's very proud of the fact that well over seven hundred people walked through that building in the month of June. So we're thrilled at the response that we've gotten from the community, and it continues to grow, and as I mentioned, a membership is now over two hundred people. So thank you.
Wonderful. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate the, the Gadsden, the Water Board and what they did last Monday, and me and you have the, we're on that, that board, and we get to, we got to sit through that hour and forty-five minute meeting yesterday afternoon, and it's, and I'm not saying that I enjoyed every bit of it, because I learned so much. Chad, Harry made the, made the point that, so, you know, I'm not going to put y'all through that forty-five minute picture display, but really, you, if you have time, or if, Mayor, if you can check that out, it's really amazing what they did and how they, how they come about finding that, that leak, and then what they had to do to get it fixed, and in the timely manner they did get it fixed. So just to thank them again for that. We had something come up on social media. I'm not a big social media person. I'll go check some things. If I'm tagging something, I can see it on one of the Neighborhood Watch pages there in District Seven, about a park, Dwight Park over there off Cabot Avenue. I think me and Councilwoman Monatra and Mr. Ford were, were tagged in it. We are, we have looked at that, and I think everything's going to get cleared up. I do agree, grass should not get that high, but it's not as high as, as where we would go out and charge somebody to cut your grass. I mean, I think you had to get thirteen inches for that to happen, but just, you know, we, I, I know, I put my number out there. I know Dixie, or Councilwoman Monatra put her number. I've heard Jason do it on this right here, he'll yell it. I know the other ones. I mean, we're, we're out there. We have to know. If you let us know something, we can get it fixed. I mean, we are, we are the elected officials. You guys elected us in here. We care about the community. We care about your community. But if we don't know, I just can't stumble upon a social media post that's already got fifty-five comments and then, and then try to backtrack it. So just, just do, you know, we're, we're working on those apps for you guys to inform us, and we're trying our best to communicate as well as possible with you guys. So just try to, I understand people go on social media and kind of vent, but try to come to us directly, and we can get your problem fixed a lot faster. That'll be all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Yeah, along with that comment, our Public Affairs Office is doing a great job in getting the word out. If you go to cityofgadsden.com, you can find virtually anything you need for contacting any of us or any city department. Then we have the text.gov. You can opt in if you're not already in. The Hey Gadsden app, you have to download that, and then the new one is REP, that's R-E-P apostrophe D, and that's going to be where you can ask a question, and you'll get a video response from that department head. If you want to talk about grass, you'll probably have somebody from Public Works. So encourage everybody to share that, spread that word, and be informed. Want to, again, jump on the Water Board bandwagon. What a great bunch of folks. We're blessed to have them in our city. What we came away from last night, former Representative Gil Isbell's here, and he's on that board as well, is the family atmosphere at Gadsden Water Works. The gentleman, Joel Smith, who everybody affectionately calls Peewee, retired six years ago. So the person in charge that was responsible for that water leak at whatever time in the morning calls Peewee in the morning, and he, Peewee answers the phone out of dead sleep, and he gets his britches on and his boots, and he's there. So he and Billy ride around in the dark of the night trying to find this water leak. So that's the kind of dedication, that's the kind of people that we have in our community. And Mayor Ford, back when we were recruiting UltraSafe Nuclear, and you were out of town, so I've slipped into your spot there at the meeting at the Community College, and there were three cities competing for that two-hundred-and-fifty-plus-million-dollar company or project that'll be located here in Gadsden. And it just dawned on me, you know, I didn't, haven't really been to one of those meetings, but I looked them in the eye, and I said, you know, there's two other cities that are great cities. You're going to hear the same thing from those cities that you're going to hear from our city, how we're going to do whatever to be a good partner with you should you choose us. I said, but we have something that those other two cities don't have, and it's our people. The people of Gadsden and Etowah County make us different than the other communities in Austin, Texas, and somewhere in North Carolina that we were competing against. And I think that resonated in this water leak situation. Not only the Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board, which is a separate entity, they stand alone, they are not under the City of Gadsden, but the City of Gadsden was there. Mayor Ford was there, there were, Public Affairs were there getting the word out, Brett was there, Michael was there, and others. We were, we were in, working in concert. Everything's working together, just like we do with Etowah County, seat of government, and the other eleven municipalities in Etowah County. That's what makes us better, y'all. That's what makes Gadsden tick and Etowah County tick, is our people. It's you. It's those of you that show up every Tuesday and, and want to know what's going on. So I'm, I'm proud of our people. I'm proud of not just the people at the Water Board, but our people in Gadsden and Etowah County in general. That's what makes us better. So on to some announcements. These are kind of public service announcements. If you go down Rainbow Drive around the skating rink, Horton Bend exit, you're going to notice that the long-awaited turn lanes are now under construction. Big thanks to County Commissioner Craig Inser for obtaining a grant for that. But the, the traffic is, you know, the speed limit's forty-five. The state of Alabama is asking us to go thirty-five. There's cones, there's all kinds of signals and things flashing. There's a lot of men out there working, so be careful when you're going down Rainbow Drive, probably starting around Pruitt's, if you're going south there toward Rainbow City, to pass the entrance to Horton's Bend right there. So there's going to be a lot of congestion, you know, to have that kind of growth, it takes a while. So I don't know how long it'll take them to do this project, but it's, I think, a couple of turn lanes, one coming up Horton's Bend and one coming off of Rainbow Drive. It'll be great when it's done, so let's please pay attention to the traffic there. We've talked about flock cameras. If you weren't aware, Gadsden Police Department was involved in stopping a, basically, an international crime ring that was occurring here in Gadsden, not just in Gadsden, all over the country, but our flock cameras that are newly installed was, was a large part of that, along with our Police Department. So that was an investment this council voted for and brought to us by the administration. Every city has these flock cameras. There's nothing nefarious about it. It's smart technology. It allows law enforcement to do what they need to do to solve crimes, but in this case, also to prevent crimes. So very proud of that, proud of our Police Department and, and how that worked, and how they arrested two people, I think, from another country, like Romania or somewhere like that. So, and there'll be more flock cameras coming. They're, they're in the budget forthcoming. Also tomorrow, Gadsden City High School students are volunteering to paint fire hydrants. Y'all, believe it or not, we have over a thousand fire hydrants in the City of Gadsden, and a lot of them are in need of repainting. So it's a public safety issue, and it's also a community pride issue. I happen to have a fire hydrant in my front side yard, so I look forward to, it, it, it needs a coat of paint, so I look forward to seeing what color they paint it and when they get to that one. We have a grand opening at the Gadsden Industrial Park. This is the former steel mill, Republic Steel, or LTV Steel site. It's this Friday, seventy-plus good manufacturing jobs, and they're growing. This is, you say it, Magnico? Magnico Mitrail. I think they're out of Ohio. I was, heard that when they first came here. They searched far and wide, once again, found the steel plant site, seventy good manufacturing jobs over there, and once again, I think it was our people. They were looking for people that could do the kind of manufacturing that they needed, and they chose Gadsden, Alabama. Our Public Works Department, in front, while we were over there, the, our Public Works Department uncovered a sidewalk in the Oak Park community. And it doesn't sound like a, a big deal, right? But it was overgrown with grass. It's about one million dollars worth of sidewalk. If you go out and do a sidewalk today, I don't know how many linear feet or whatever it is, but side, it's, it's concrete, and it's labor-intensive. It's very expensive. So they've kind of recovered about a million dollars' worth of usable sidewalks, which allows people to walk on the sidewalk, not in the street. It's just a lot safer. So hats off to Public Works for, for that find. And then last but not least, we have now received our Quint Four Ladder Truck. This mon, this was paid for, I guess, in the last administration through the ARP money, is that right, Mayor?
Yes, sir. That's when y'all voted on it. We moved money over to get it, and it was a year behind, and-
Right.
-we got it, and they got it in operation now.
Man, that's great. That's critically important, that there's going to be an unveiling this coming Monday, July twenty-second, at ten a.m. at Station Number Four in Alabama City in District Six.
And I will be out of town, so if y'all could attend, it would be great.
Sure, that would be great. Well, that's, you know, we, we talk about our fleets, we talk about Public Works fleets, our police cars. We've replaced forty-plus police vehicles this term so far, a couple of fire trucks, I think, and these are critically important. Those things get, get run pretty hard, and, and we do the best job we can maintenance-wise to get all we can get out of them, but when you got to replace one, y'all, you just got to have it, and it's a Quint Four Ladder Truck-
One point two million.
Yeah, one point two million.
And we got the bottom of the line, but we still got a nice one.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, but, so you got to go, because, you know, the, the way they initiate a truck in there, you have to push it back into the bay. Well, this is a ladder truck, so they're going to need every willing body to push this ladder truck back into the bay. So it's just kind of-
I'll feed that.
Yeah, come on.
You can push it in.
We're excited about it.
You can do it. That's, that'll be fun. That's, we were, saw that over in your district at the new fire station, how, I didn't know that was the thing, but now they, yeah, that's the neat story behind that, how historically that's, that's done. So we always, it's, it's been a great day at the city council meeting at the City of Gadsden, again, headlined by our Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board folks that literally are the unsung heroes, that we were so close to not having water, and that would have been national news. That would have been probably the lead story on NBC with, with that water, a town our size. We also sell water to numerous other water departments. They would have been without water. So it could have been a real catastrophic event, and thank God that did not happen, and thank for the folks at the Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board for their actions to prohibit that from, from happening. So without any further comments, we will adjourn this meeting. Everybody have a good week.